Greetings, this is Brian Harris with the Independent Black Voters on Facebook. Our vote is not free. We have been doing a series of interviews heading up to the general election, specifically so that our community can be informed, motivated voters. Today, we're here to have Ms. Brenda Zamora. Good morning.
Good morning.
She is running for the school board district, District G. Obviously, I'm sorry, District what?
D.
D, I'm sorry, my mistake. Yeah, and it is very important that we in our community understand everyone that is running, what their background is, what their ideology is, and where they see that we can improve our school district. So, without any further ado, and we also have Ms. Camilla Bywaters on here. Hello, Ms. Bywaters.
Good morning, everyone.
Okay, so, we're gonna start off, Brenda, tell us about you. Give us a little bit about you. Tell us a little bit about what made you decide to run for school board? And what are the key issues that you see that should be addressed by the school board? And from where we are now and where we go forward?
So, that's a big question. Those are big questions. I think who I am has a lot to do with why I decided to run. So, I am a mother. I have three kids. I have two in the district right now. They are both in elementary school. My oldest is an IEP student as well. I have my little baby. She is a year and a half. And they, you know, I was a single mom for so long. I had to go through a lot of struggles in life. And that led me to the work that I do, my everyday work actually, which is working in a progressive space for economic justice, environmental justice, reproductive justice, all the justices, to focus on the injustice that we face now. With that, it kind of led into some educational stuff, the work that I was doing. We talked about the importance of why we need to vote up and down the ballots for so long. And I would always talk about, you know, local elections matter. That's the most important. These are the folks that affect your everyday life. And I focused a lot on doing education around why legislatures, you know, are important, our city council, and I would tie it all to how it affects our everyday life. But then, I realized that a lot of folks also were putting pieces together of why school board was important. And as we went through this pandemic and as we faced a lot of frustration between the board members and the, and schools and parents and families, it became very chaotic. So, at first, what I decided to do was just recap, you know, these board meetings. I'm sure a lot of folks know these board meetings were ridiculously long. And I would put myself in the space of when I was a single parent, wanted to be involved. This was just not reasonable. Six, seven hour meetings, leaving at the place at one in the morning? That's just not realistic and that's not doable for our families if they want to be involved. So, I was doing kind of just recaps of what was happening, what policies were being passed, and explaining how it will affect our children and our families once they were implemented. I also started doing Spanish interpretation on my personal Facebook as much as I could because my community was being left out in a way. So, I was doing all these little bits of pieces and realized that the biggest problem that we're facing right now with the district out of, I mean, it's a lot of different problems. But one big one is just transparency and communication between the district and the community. And I want to say the community, not just CCSD families, because there is community members out there that are trying to help, that are, that can be great allies to the district for everyone to thrive and be successful in, in the way of students. So, it's, it's a mix of a lot. That's how I've narrowed it down as much as I can because there's just so much other work that I've done too, you know, around just legislative issues. I've worked on like paid sick days in Nevada. So, I've kind of done the organizing work to move people to a goal so we can all be successful.
Okay, thank you. Now, you are a sitting school board member, is that correct?
No.
Okay, you're not a sitting, okay.
I'm not. I'm just an organizer, an advocate.
Okay, great. I wasn't sure. So, obviously, there was a big upheaval right now, just recently, in the school board with the superintendent. The first thing, before I come and ask your opinion on that, what do you think are the basic roles of the school board? What do you think are the top three items that you think the school board has to be effective in and has to do?
I think definitely is being community-based in a way. They have to, okay, let me, let me take a step back and I apologize. Because in the world I want to live in, you know, our school board members are very interactive with our community. They listen, and then they are the people that bring our voices to the bigger table and listen to the community when making decisions that affect our children. That is definitely one of the biggest things. I think our school board members definitely have to, I'm trying to find the words for it, but I think they have to be really just in touch with the community or bring their experiences to decision-making and hold people accountable. Hold, you know, superintendent accountable, hold administrators accountable, just kind of be the person to make sure that things are happening and focusing on the kids. The focus is just so every, the focus is everywhere right now.
Okay, great. That helps a little bit. Again, you talk about accountability. To my understanding, the school board's one employee to manage is the superintendent. Obviously, there was a big upheaval where the superintendent was fired and rehired. And then now, obviously, we're going forward and it kind of gave a black eye to the Clark County school system and almost made us a joke across the United States. Give me your opinion on, again, if you're the school board, what were your thoughts about that issue, the way, basically, the fact that it happened, the way it happened, and what do you think was done right? And what do you think should have been done differently?
So, I was actually in the room for both occasions, when we fired and we hired. I unfortunately could not do public comments on the decision to fire him, but I called in my husband to come in and do it. That was the first time we actually took our baby to a school board meeting. It probably wasn't the best choice because it was a very chaotic meeting. If you were in the room, you know what I'm talking about. But he testified, he knew where I stand. We kind of just stand together in that decision to fire him. When it was brought up on the board to rehire him, I was able to testify that way to not rehire. And this came from back in 2018 when they were talking about it. I was just in the room when a lot of our educators have done research and they were just showing up to places. It was a progressive summit we were at. And they were, they gave us 10 reasons why we shouldn't hire. They called people, they had people, you know, in Florida to just give us their point of view. And they were very, they felt very strongly about this. And these are folks that went out to do their research. So, I kind of had my point of view from them. You know, I real, you know, had them as allies in a way of why we shouldn't rehire Superintendent Hara. And I think it was just a big mistake we did. I honestly, it was losing in the district in a way. We all decided to do something and then we went back and made a different decision. It frustrated a lot of parents. It honestly did. And a lot of it, because of that choice, is one of the biggest reasons why I also decided to run. Because I definitely am a big advocate of still having someone represent the east side, which is District D, someone that looks like us. And that was a fear in a way that I had, that we would lose a seat to someone that doesn't represent the East Las Vegas.
Okay, great. So, we're gonna come back to that. And those, I appreciate your, your comments there. We actually, well, I'm gonna stay there real quick. To obviously terminate superintendent is a big decision from the board, but it is part of the scope of what the board should do. But many times, again, it cannot be emotional. It has to be vote on metrics. It should be done on metrics. It should be done on performance. Tell me in your ideas where, since you said that you were, actually, you agreed with it, why? What are the metrics? What are the perform? What are the reasons and rationale that had you been a school board member or not, you would have used as the criteria? And I ask that because obviously, the makeup of this board will determine the direction, potentially, the direction that it goes after the election.
So, it's just so much bigger than what's in the public eye sometimes. And that's where I'm still learning to communicate this part of things. But the metrics, I, I would say, would be more of how our teachers are feeling and how are we doing with even the teacher shortage? I think that's one that we can use, that we can all see that is happening. We lost, we have lost so many teachers these past ye, these past few years, these past four years. And it has a lot to do with how they feel with the district is going and the leadership of the district. And a lot, and that is Superintendent Hara, and that also is the board. Are we, is our main focus retaining our teachers at this point? There have been decisions being passed that we can, we feel, and I say we because I have, you know, the teachers that I talk to, everyone on my shoulders. And I say, we feel like when there's decisions that are made, sometimes they're being forgotten. So, when we talk about new teachers getting paid this amount, while our old teachers are struggling to pay their bills, that's, that's just mirrors how we probably feel about the teachers. That's just one example I can think about right now. You know, when we talk about, are we really focusing on violence in our schools? You know, besides a big book of a hundred and something pages that we want, you know, students and families to read, is that reasonable? Is that something that can really make an impact? I, and I come from a space where when we organize and we need to connect with our community, we need to meet people where they're at. You know, does that mean, you know, we change our tactics? We do this? Just, just really focusing on how we can get that communication and relationship with community, with our community.
Okay, great. We're gonna come back to that, but I'm gonna make this comment before we leave.
Okay.
The decisions that should be made should be not on feelings. They should be on metrics. It should be looking at where were we when you started at this position? Where are we now as it pertains to specific measure, metrics? Where are we right now? What is our retention rate? What is the, it, it should be not feelings and metrics. I think one of the big problems that happened in this last coup, or whatever you want to call it, is there were no specific metrics used. It was more of a feelings. And, and as a school board member, it is very important that the board gets together, unites, and works around metrics to make decisions. So that it takes, I don't like him, I like him, politically, I'm aligned, I'm not aligned because we saw what we did because there were no real hard attempt to put metrics together when he started and to hold him accountable to where he was when this whole issue happened. Not to say for against, but the metrics are very important.
Yes, and I hear you. And there is research around it. There is, there is research on how our teacher shortage has grown in the past two, three years. So, we do have data around that, that I do not have in front of me. But I will definitely share a link with whoever needs to be shared with.
But again, having the data is one thing, setting the metrics is another one. So that you have clear, tangible metrics that look at what are you doing from year to year? Are we getting better or worse? So, I'm gonna switch gears and talk about the school district as a whole. We are obviously very low in the school as far as performance nationwide. First, I'm gonna ask you, what do you think are the top two to three reasons we are in the situation we are? And where do you think the focus should be to start to give fair and equal educational opportunities to everyone regardless of their economic or race status?
So, I know as a whole, our biggest problem is money, funds, you know? We, during this pandemic, I know we received a large amount of money. My biggest issue that I'm having right now is that I was part of the committee to say where these funds should go. And my experience there wasn't pleasant at all because I worked so hard on collecting. I worked hard on the part of, the community part of collecting, you know, community members' suggestions. We went to community key holders, everyone, and pulled in these suggestions. I was part of the committee to collect these suggestions and present a hole to the district. And the district kind of just came around and said, that's all good, but this is what we're doing. And that's what's being presented. This is part of the focus on the future 2024 plan. And the committee that was part of that. But money is a big thing. It ties into what's happening in the legislative session as well and also organizing towards that. And I say that because we tried two years ago to get more funds to the district. We only had the big teacher unions showing up when we really need everyone. Everyone who's involved in education, we need you all at, you know, Grant Sawyer Building. We need you at Carson City testifying, and it doesn't take so much time. But education on how our everyday folks can help us. Can you please repeat the question, Mr. Harris?
I'd ask you, what did you think were the top two or three issues that are prevalent to, to help improve the overall Clark County school system so that there would be equity of opportunity regardless of your race or economic status?
Okay, so that, the one was the money part for me. The second is transparency. So, transparency in, kind of ties into the money part, where our money is going. Does our, does Legacy High School get more funds for this certain amount when Valley High School is struggling to get the same thing? Transparency and explaining how it all works. And where money is going? The racial part of it is also a big thing. And I say this because we see our historic West Side schools and our East Las Vegas school are the ones that are struggling the most to just get funds and have the things they need. Literally, the things they need, paper, scissors, all these things. But when I go to Summerland and I see their school, they're great. They have everything. They even have extra things. There's a school that they gave a backpack to each student. So, why, that, it was donated. But why can't we do those donations as well with these big businesses to our east and west side schools? I think about, I actually think about Trustee Ford in this part of it because she's very good at saying, why is this certain amount of money going here? And who is going to benefit from this? And she's very well at holding folks accountable in that way. And I, I look up to her in that way. Third is just communication, and I say this all the time. And I'm coming from a, as a parent, I'm coming as a community organizer. Communication on explaining policies. There's still so much that I'm learning that I am in, I don't want to say partnership, but I have a group of folks that I can go to. And I tell them, hey, I need help with this. Please explain this to me. I'm involved. Can you, I, I am, everyday folks will not understand all these itty-bitty things of policies that are passed. So, we really need to be better at communicating that. I, I am so tired of things going, happening, and it just, we find out when it's too late and we can't even show up to a school board meeting to say we are against this or for it. That's a lot. That's a lot. It's just so much, so many things. And I, I'm really transparent with everything. And I'm really a type of person that I'm going to learn as well of the things that I do not know. But at the end of the day, I hold my community on my chest. I am doing this for my community. I am doing this because I've done work in historic West Side. I have focused for the past three years just with black families. I have learned that when black folks are free, everyone else will be free. And we all just kind of are going to line up in that way. And I hold my own community as well because we barely got Spanish interpretation at school board meetings. So, this is, it's a lot.
Okay, a couple of comments in there. And I, I, I thank you again. We're gonna go back and we may come back on here. You did talk about money and you talked about transparency, which I believe transparency is a very issue, big issue. But this is a two and a half billion dollar company right now. And I'm gonna put on my taxpayer hat and say, sometimes we need to say, is it not having enough money, but how you actually utilize those funds? Because you can't continue to say, I need more money. I need no money. I need more money. But we're still in the lower end of the stratosphere. We spend probably per capita as much, if not more, than many of the successful of school districts. And so, we, from the taxpayer aspect, we want a return on our tax investments, not just more taking of that. So, we'll come back on that, but transparency is important. And, you know, when it comes to the money, it's not just more money sometimes. It's the utilization because I've all, I, I, I've just seen $29 million going to safety in one school and say, my God, is that, you know, should it cost that much? If you're utilizing taxpayers' dollars and what is it being used for and how? So, I'm gonna go back to that. I, I want to swing around to your opinion on a couple of things. Clark County is, it is, I believe now, a minority-majority school district. There's been a push to break up the Clark County's, uh, school district. There's been a push for vouchers. Give me your opinion on, should we break up the school system and why? Or not? Should we or should we not? And why? And give me your opinion on school vouchers.
So, breaking up the district is a hot topic. That one's a little bit tricky for me, Brian, because in my mind, it would make sense in a way of when I hear it, I think, yeah, Henderson, it's its own city. They can do their own thing. And our district is too big. But then I think about LAUSD is big. They're just, they're, they're huge and they're still successful. So, it's not really, is the district too big for us to be successful? I think we just have to do more research and be more intentional of mirroring the good things that other districts might be doing and trying those things out. I think we're just stuck in the same cycle and, and really not trying anything new. And we're in this wheel. Vouchers, I'm very transparent about it. You know, it's, we need to keep the money in our schools now and try to fix our schools. I, I know parents are always saying, well, you know, this is better for our kids. But our, our schools can be better for our kids, you know? But if we're losing money to vouchers, it, it's never going to improve, ever. And it's, in a way, I feel like it's in, not, not equally for everyone, you know? Because I think about, an IEP child is not going to be able to take a voucher and go to another school because they won't accept it. Most of the time, they don't accept them. So, that's not any type of equity.
Okay, thank you. A little commentary and then we'll move to the next question.
Look, Brian, I appreciate these commentaries because I'm taking notes.
As a person who is black, who's our descendants of slaves, who has gone through the civil rights issue, I live in Henderson. And if I was solely concerned about Henderson, I would be for breaking up the school system. Overnight, the school systems in Henderson would skyrocket. Overnight, the school systems in Summerland would skyrocket. But the areas that are in the worst position would remain the same. It just releases the rich and the middle class from the burden of the poor. Public schools were put together and it would require duplication, the school boards. It would require duplication of busting systems. It would require duplications of everything. And financially, now, our operational costs would potentially triple or more. And who has the best ability to handle those costs of operations? Henderson and Summerland, because now they have reduced themselves away from the majority of people who look like me and look like you. So, therein lies a, I always call it systemic racism, is never a blatant attempt for racism. It is designing a system of, that allows one group to always win while other groups lose. And I believe breaking up the school system is nothing but a attempt to tweak a system that already does not benefit black and brown people and basically make it better for the ruling class. It is a form of systemic racism because the people that are for breaking up the school system are the ones who tend to be in a better position from the school system. I also, as a product of a 60s baby, believe, when I went to school, I graduated from a high school, a public school, and I did what pretty decent. I have an undergrad in electrical engineering technology. I have an, uh, I have an MBA, and I am a product of the school system. Some of my friends who had more to do, their parents put them in private school. They paid the money to go to private school. I do not believe that a system that is designed for public should take away funds and give it to private because it is another form of systemic racism. Because if I am a Mormon and I have a school, preference goes to Mormons. If I am Catholic, preference goes to Catholics. We now take the money from the public schools and we support systemic racism in every multiple form that we have. So, no, the, the public funds should remain public. And if you do not want to have the opportunity to be in a public school and fix it, then you have every right to go, but your money as taxes stays here. Okay. There's, we're in turmoil in the United States across. There are some dark powers that are coming out, that have gone on, and they have creeped into the school system. Many people, and I'm gonna start off, they talk about government overreach, which goes back many times to the mask, wearing the mask, setting down Wearing the mask, setting down the school system, the things that we did to fight COVID. Give me your opinion on how the school board acted in the COVID? What you think that they did well? What you think they did not? Do you agree that we should have a ma- have had a mass system? Um, just give me your opinions there.
COVID, it was just a very hard time and I think I saw a lot, um, and learned a lot during that time. So I always smile when I think back of the school board and, and pandemic times. Um, I was definitely in support. Um, it is, and this is all public record. I've, I've shown up to do public comment on all these issues. Um, I was definitely in support of masks in schools. And. I think it was just because. Data and what was being brought up, you know? It was a good balance, you know? I don't, I didn't see a big issue with the masks. My kids were used to being in masks, I was used to being masked, we just made it a normal thing. Um, I know a lot of folks were very upset, which created a lot of chaos during board meetings. Um, the board could have definitely handled some situations better. I think if there is a rule, then that rule should be set across the board. It doesn't matter if you agree or disagree, but it will avoid, I think, some of the problems and outbursts that we would have. The vaccine situation, that one was a little bit difficult for me. And I say this, you know, because I do believe that folks should have a choice with their body. But at the same time, we were, you know, our kids have to be vaccinated to be in school. So the teacher situation and the vaccine thing, that was, I was very just kind of neutral with that. I honestly was neutral. I, at a point, and I think at that time, I was just more focused on what do we have to do to get our children back in school? And I was a big believer that we need to get them back in school. Because I was coming, I had folks calling me crying because I understand and I understand, I'm very transparent about this. I understand, school is not childcare, but school is a place that folks could just take their kids and go to work and do what they have to do so they can pay their bills. So I would, had those stories in my mind. And I was just at a point where whatever we need to do to get these schools open, we need to do it because our families are struggling. Our Clark County families are struggling, our students were suffering because I knew that we had grandmas, you know, with the children, kind of being the caregivers. Not knowing how to use a Chromebook. Some families didn't even have wifi. It was just so many stories of families struggling to just get through, to get education during this time. So whatever needed to be done, needed to be done.
Okay, um. We have a, a teacher shortage, obviously. Uh, we're, I always say in a firefight, it should not be business as usual. Because without having to go pay a, a bunch of, of consultants to tell me this, it's very obvious. That there is a direct correlation of substitute teachers and, and probably the lowest. Um, academia substitute teachers are put in the areas that are black and brown with the lowest economics. There's a dark correlation between economics. There's a direct correlation on the fact that how could you expect your, um, students to perform in math? If in some schools, they don't have math teachers in full grades? And sometimes in the whole high school? And we sit here and we talk about not having teachers, but we don't come up with creative solutions to at least get people. Into the school system that can teach them math. You're right, we have become a babysitting, uh, facility. Uh, where we drop, where people, kids of lower economic, uh, who have lower economic parents. Who, uh, whose parents aren't as demanding because they're a lot of times uninformed. But there, it is a babysitting, uh, exercise. Because just now, to try to serve, so- solve the, um, the, uh, lack. Of substitute teachers, what they do, they made it so you can become a su- sub, uh, uh, get out of high school and become a substitute teacher. Which is a recipe for disaster, which is not a fix, it's not even a Band-Aid. Uh, so give me your opinion then on the fact that one of the reasons that we have this, uh, we have. A, a, a educational system even now that is definitely designed so that. The poor areas end up with the worst, uh, results because they have the worst. They take the blunt of the teacher capacity. And by the way, it would get worse if we broke up the three school systems. Well, give me your opinion there.
I smiled because my, my, my brother who just graduated, you know, in May. I remember he had a substitute teacher all through middle school, all three years, all three years, just subs. He was coming home with worksheet, that's all he had to do. And you can definitely tell the difference of someone who had a real teacher with them. And, you know, had just subs and worksheets to go through, to get through things. Um, it's very unfortunate. It is, I laughed because I would say it's a Band-Aid to the situation, but you're right, it wasn't a Band-Aid to just getting eighteen year olds. With a high school diploma to try to be substitute teachers. At that point, they're just becoming, um, babysitters, babysitters. And our community, and I say are because I think about, you know, the West Side and the East Side a lot. It, we're affected the most. We are the working class, you know, we are the folks who, most of us are living paycheck to paycheck unfortunately. And it has nothing to do, it's not, it's not the family's fault either. If this, if school is kind of a type of childcare replacement, it's really just the system and how messed up it is. Because childcare is just stupid expensive. It's, it's a month's worth of rent. So what can we do? I, we spend so much money on other things that I feel like we can't spend money on. Finding out how we can retain teachers and get folks to want to become teachers. Given them better experience.
Yeah, let me give you a thought, you said better experiences. And I told you a little bit about my background. This is something, it's a, it's a pure math issue that I scratched my head. We have roughly twelve hundred teachers that we are missing. If we have twelve hundred teachers that we are missing and that would be paid at this pay scale. And we're bringing in substitute teachers that are paid at this pay scale. Then there should be a surplus of money somewhere because you have to have put together a budget. With the assumption that your schools, your teacher's gonna be here. So there's a bunch of money that they're saving by having substitute teachers. Why haven't we considered and say, you know what? We're gonna do student, we're gonna do substitute teachers graded and we're gonna pay the ones who have the higher credentials in science. Who have degrees that could come in, we're gonna pay them at a pretty high scale to retain them. Uh, because there is no way that a person, and I did this just as a test, will come in for, you know, for, for slave wages. To teach in the areas that are needed the, the most for any sustained time period. And we need to be creative. I told you, we're in a war, we're in a battle. We need to be doing triage. We need to not keep talking about, oh, the problem's there. There, that we've talked about the teacher shortage for years and years and years. And that's where I talk about metrics. That's where there have not been metrics that should have been tied to the superintendent about retention. But there should have been metrics that were tied to solutions right now. On how we teach our kids even in a teacher shortage. But, uh, I make those statements because we need to be thinking differently. And, and now, not, oh, I have a plan in, in twenty twenty four or twenty twenty six. That does nothing to address the problems here now in twenty twenty two.
So let me give you an aha moment maybe. As you talk about, you know, paying the folks who have the most credential a little bit more. There were so many folks. And I don't wanna say any names, but I know there were so many folks who had applied to become and be part of this, this, this program. And did not get accepted because they wouldn't even give them a why. So maybe what it was, it was they did not want to pay the most credit of folks more. They wanted to keep folks down here.
Okay, so, uh, and I, I do appreciate your time. Actually, we, we, um, I try to keep it to an hour. Sometimes I go a little bit over, sometimes I don't, but I thank you because time is important. So, uh, let me ask you a couple of key questions. My, none of my, uh, interviews are ever the same. And I want Ms. Bywaters to have a chance to ask some questions. We have become a majority, minority school district. Uh, we have seen a rise in the Hispanic, uh, representation on the school board. At the expense of black representation on the school board. How do we go about of giving a voice? To, and I'm specifically, this is the independent black voters, to the black community? Should we have a set aside, uh, school board position that it's appointed? Uh, what do we do? Because the black community, while we are happy to see a rise. In participation from other mon- minorities groups, it should not be at the expense of the black community. We were barely, we, we barely had a voice. And while now, we seem to have no voice that directly has the cultural. And the life experiences from the black community. So give me your thought there.
It is very unfortunate. Um, I think about District C a lot and that one. I honestly took that in a way, um, very hard. Because I, in my mind, that's how it is. District C should always kind of, because it's majority of the wet, historic West Side. It being a black voice and a black representation there. And it, it's just unfortunate that it, it went the way it went. But I think this is also a learning opportunity for folks. To realize why it's important to get out to vote and why every vote really matters. That was a very close race. But I, in a way, I feel like I have proven that. I am an ally to the black community. I, I'm telling you, a lot of the work that I've done has been solely focused around black folks. I have done surveys just specifically, you know, around black women. I, everything, everything that I've learned, everything I've been surrounded about, around. The black community. And it, it had a lot to do with, one, I, I need my children to also know their background. And where they're coming from and their culture. So I do surround myself a lot with black women because I know they're powerful and I know they are great leaders. But. I want to say that I, I will definitely be an ally and y'all can count on me. Cause I do hold that with me. I've been, I've been successful because of black women, honestly, because of her leadership and I am forever grateful. And she is the one that has sat with me and has taught me about black liberation. Everyone else will be, you know, free. So it's, in a way, I have learned more about that than I have about my own community. And that's okay, because there's time for me to learn. There is still time for me to learn and how we all can just be free.
Thank you, uh, for your candid response again. And, 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 you know, during our discussions, well, a couple of things again and, and. And, and I state this and I'm great, glad you are learning because we have some powerful black women in there. We also have powerful black men who sometimes are starting to feel that they are forgotten. And, 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 and many times, black men were the ones who gave up their lives. Black men are the ones who, who, who opened up the civil rights movement. They were the ones who took the blunt of much of what happened on the streets when people were beat, killed, et cetera. And opened the doors for everyone. So, you know, I'm glad to hear your statement. I just have to put that in a lot of times because I feel like black men are being forgotten in many places. And I've decided not to let that happen. But, um, I, I appreciate your candor on this. One of the things, and, and again, I'm gonna pass it over to Camilla here to kind of take the last ten minutes or so. Uh, and then let you, uh, finish it up on there. Uh, but I do wanna ask you, there's a lot of issues with what they call critical race theories. Uh, there's been attempts in Florida to rewrite history, to make, uh, slavery not the horror that it was. Uh, to not teach real history about not just the successes of America, but the horrors of that America experienced in history. Uh, because it is not critical race theories that talk about the Tulsa massacres. It is not critical race theory to talk about the injustices to the indigenous. It is not critical race theory to talk about the Hispanic population and how they were moved out of the West. And taken over by the United States. True history should be exactly that, true is history. It should not be done to make you feel comfortable. It should be true history and in some points, it should make you uncomfortable. Give me your thoughts of where we're headed as a school, uh, eh, 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 both here and nationally on this whole issue of. Uh, uh, of truth and history. Because black history is not black history, it is American history. Uh, give me your thoughts there and then I'm gonna ask Ms. Bywaters if she has some questions.
I am all about teaching real history and a lot of it comes because it's not that I can't do it, but. I want my children and their friends to learn about it together. Um, for example, Juneteenth, when I asked them, did y'all talk about Juneteenth and what this is? Because my children are half-black and I need them to know about Juneteenth. And they were like, yeah, it's just, you know, a very simple, basic, you know, rainbow version of what happened. And I said, no, here's a YouTube video, we're going to do this now. Um, but it's unfortunate to think that other students are not going to learn what Juneteenth really is. And, you know, people say CRT, they throw, it's just a buzzword at this point. It's just a word they use to try to rally folks up because CRT is just a college thing. It's not even an elementary thing. They're just trying to fire people up, it's just a tactic that they have. But really doing the education and talking about real history needs to be taught. Our kids really need to know what's happening. Um, just to better prepare them for life. Nothing is going to be rainbows and all this, you know, colorful things when you get to the real world. So, and, and especially in the world we're in now, especially with all the protests we have going on. Everything, all that needs to tie in together and it's the truth.
Thank you again. So now I'm gonna pass the buck and we may go a little bit over. Ms. Bywaters, do you have some questions? Ma- Ms. Tracy is on here. I'm gonna let you guys ask a couple of questions. I'm sure I missed some stuff. And so you can ask some questions and then, uh, we're gonna let you, Ms. Zamora, take us home after they ask questions.
Well, thank you so much, Brian. You always do a phenomenal job with asking questions and I was taking notes as well. Um, one thing I would like to ask you, Brenda, um, who are some of your mentors here in our state? And what work, so who are your mentors and what organizations do you look up to or respect?
So one of my biggest mentors was Erica Washington. Um, and I get very emotional about this right now because I, I actually recently just transitioned out of that org. So it's still very fresh and new to me because I was with that org and with her for three years. Um, but Erica has taught me so much, so much. And she is also the one that did the push of, you know? Cause I would say, I would tell her, I don't think I'm ready to run. And she's like, you're never going to be ready to run, you just have to do it and hold, you know? Make sure you're holding your heart and you're still true to yourself. Um, another big mentor I have in my life is Quentin Savoir. He, he is the person that. He, he is the person that I, I look at him as a big brother. And any questions I have, any, he has taught me that, one, no question is stupid. No, I can, I can say no, you know, just the power that I have within myself and how powerful I can be. So those two are just major people in my life. Some organizations that I do look up to, I really love, you know, Make It Work, not because I'm biased or anything, but they were truly focused, you know, being in the black community and representing those voices, not coming from anyone else. Because sometimes we see orgs that say, you know, in the progressive space really, that they say that they're for black community, but they're not really there for them. You know, they kind of sway their way. I really look up for, for, oh my gosh, what is their name? It's, the director is Alicia Garza. It is, I used to partner with them. I can't believe, I can't remember their name. But, oh, Black to the Future, yes, Alicia Garza. She is doing such amazing work over there with that org. And just, they, they do a lot of the Black Agenda too. And that's where I learned, have learned so much because of that data, because of what's coming from them and their voices. That's all of the orgs I can think of right now. And that's only because I've been in those spaces for so long. That's all I, I know.
That's awesome. I love that. My next question is, the role of a trustee, as we all know, it is a full-time job with minimal pay and most trustees have another job. What, how were you thinking about taking on that challenge with having this another, which it really is supposed to be a part-time job, but it's full-time?
Yeah.
It is full-time. And one of my critiques of the current sitting trustee in your district, trustee Sepeda, in my, from my perspective and as an advocate who's, who contacts her often, she's very, she's not responsive. And there could be a lot of theories in play on why she's not responsive. But one thing could be that it's overwhelming. It's an overwhelming job. So have you thought about that and how you will manage your, your family, your time? And I don't know if you're still going to be working full-time. How does that come into play for you as you're continuing to move into this space?
So I am a big person when it comes to manifesting things and saying things aloud because they will happen. So I actually, that's the reason why I transitioned out of, you know, the org that I was in to this new position and this new job because of the availability of it. Because I'm thinking already ahead of, you know, I have meetings on Wednesdays for work session in the morning and I have to be there, you know, I have to show up at community events. I have to go to the schools and visit the schools. This big life decision I just made was because I'm manifesting that I will be there because I know that's one of the biggest issues we're having is that communication part. It's so interesting to see folks now at events as a candidate because they're like, hey, Brenda, and I'm like, I've met you, you know, before because I've been at this event before. And they're just like, oh, I remember seeing you. You're always showing up. We just haven't really paid attention because, you know, basically I was a no one. But I've always been around. I've always been at community events. I've always shown up wherever I needed. That's, that's my thing. And I think that's the one up that I have, you know, with the current trustee now is that I'm already involved in the community. You know, there's just so many places I've been and I can prove that I, I'm really involved.
Awesome. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I hear that a part of Hispanic culture is to really, for the men to really lead. And women kind of take a more supportive role. And in some ways, I can see that playing out on the board. Like I said, correct me if I'm wrong, this is what I hear about Hispanic culture from Hispanic individuals that I've spoken to. So how comfortable do you think you will be in holding Superintendent Jar accountable? Not only superintendent, but future superintendents that may come before us?
I'm comfortable enough. The thing is that I, these are, those are the type of things from my culture that I have kind of said no to and it's a zero tolerance thing. My household works very differently, you know. My partner, and this is why I feel comfortable also doing this role because my partner has taken on the role of being mostly the full-time parent. So he, he takes my kids. I do have three kids and sometimes people try holding that against me. And I'm like, no, I'm doing this because of my kids, but they're being taken care of. They got, he got this, you know, he got the baby. He, I did my part for baby, you know, during the baby times, he got this. And I, I'm not scared. I think there's just so much that I've gone through in life that a superintendent does not, does not scare me, you know? I've, I faced fear. I haven't gone through a lot. So that isn't scary. I'm comfortable enough of calling out BS. I'm trying to stay PG. But we're at this point, you know, that we're frustrated, we're angry, we're rallied up and this is the moment.
Awesome. I love it. Thank you. That's it for me, Brian. I don't know.
Okay. Tracy, I don't know. Tracy, you have anything? Hey, Tracy. You're on mute.
She doesn't have any questions.
Okay, great. Well, again, Ms. Brenda, we've had you on here for about an hour. You've been on the hot seat. The independent black voters are nonpartisan, but we are very active. Matter of fact, I, I thank Labassi for being on here because we believe that we have two great relationships. We may not agree on everything, but I think we agree on a lot that's going on. We think that there must be issues and there should must be agendas. We do focus on the black community because if things rise in the black community, they tend to rise in every community. So I thank you for coming on. I thank you for being candid. I thank you for running. I'm now going to give you the time, the next sixty seconds or a little longer if you so choose, to again, tell everybody who you are, what you are running for and why you would be the best candidate to help our school systems recover, our school system recover.
Thank, well, first of all, thank you so much. I appreciate this. I appreciate being on the hot seat. I haven't done an interview in a while, so this kind of brought me back. First of all, I'm Brenda Zamora. I'm running for school board trustee, District D. I decided to run because I am a parent, I am a community advocate and I'm bringing all these voices with me to this table. And I am, I'm not supposed to promise anything, but the one thing that I do promise is that I will be an ally to our community and like our advocates because they know the most. We all know that people who are closest to the problem are closest to the solution. And we have seen this for a lot of years and a lot of the successes have been because it's community-based and they came in together. I am, I want to just help you all out. I don't know everything. I am still learning, but I do not have my own agenda. I do not have my own agenda. The only thing is I just want our communities to thrive and that is, and I say our communities because my children are black and I think about them too. So the black and brown communities are my main focus right now because we have struggled enough. This is, we're done. I am tired. I don't, I want a better future for my children at this point. And that's why I'm running. I, I'm holding all these voices with me and I am truthful and transparent and y'all, I got y'all.
Okay, thank you. This is the independent black voters. Our vote is not free. We believe that an educated voter will help us with many of the solutions that are plaguing us from economic opportunity inequality, social opportunity and equality. We challenge you to listen, learn and vote. We look forward to talking to you. Actually, I think you're scheduled for a meeting at the Shepherd's Breakfast. I am now going to sign off. Please stay on here for one minute.